And these are students who have missed seven or more full days of school for excused reasons. Forty-two periods for secondary. Six percent of your kindergarteners have missed seven or more days of school for excused reasons. You know, three percent of fifth graders have missed seven or more days of school.
Kindergarten.
And this is where, as far as the data as of December 2nd, we ended with the chronic students. So again, you are trending below our California average, which is good. And we, excuse me, when we look at this, what we can see is eleven percent of your kindergarteners are chronically absent, or were chronically absent by December 2nd. And the important thing again to remember is that, is that we still have work to do with all of these students. And the ability to look at this data and have this data is really going to inform us in our decisions of how we can enhance our partnership and continue working together. So again, as we, as we continue to create the culture of achievement here through the leadership campaign, you can see all of the, the items that we've put together in that packet for you as far as the work we've done together. We're engaging parents and students. We've created all types, different types of communication pieces, whether it be auto dialer, a letter that goes home to all parents, et cetera. We've really had some, some great times of rally, what we call rallying the troops, getting, you know, communication out from the superintendent to the schools, the school sites and the principals. I know that, as you can see also in the packet, that we were able to help the superintendent craft a message for the newsletter that went out. And again, we're also educating the community. Also included in that packet is, is a really great story that we're so happy that, that was written based off of a press release that we helped create with the superintendent in the San Francisco Examiner. And we've also created this logo that I think says everything about what it is that you're doing here at this district with creating a culture of achievement, and it starts with showing up. So our next step following tonight, again, we're transitioning you from implementation to service. So we're not just training your sites on how to log in and use the system. We're really getting in there, working with the principals, training them on how to utilize their chronic absentee report and their student level data of the total absence summary breakdown. You can obviously still expect high levels of service when it comes to intervention, ensuring the proper communication and attendance notifications are going out to your families. We're really starting to now get into that conference scheduling for those face-to-face conversations with parents, and they do that through our A2A system. Again, the chronic absentee report is going to be run and provided to your sites, and we're working with Sandy on how to communicate those results and get that training done for your staff. And again, continuing with the leadership campaign, the next piece of communication that will be going out and will be based on those students in the manageable group, and that'll be coming from the superintendent. That is it. Are there any other questions?
Do they have questions? Oh, they're thinking over there. I was just struck by a couple of things. One, I was struck by the bulge in excused absence in fifth grade for some reason. But I was also noting that the, you know, we get that high level in kindergarten, first grade, where parents are thinking it's not so important, drops really well in upper elementary, and then I see it going back up again on all, both, you know, truancy and excused absences and everything in junior high. Now, I suspect the excused absences may have something to do with what we experienced, which was a serious uptick in ill, sick days in junior high as they're exposed to a lot more kids. Also realizing that, I was going, well, why junior high? The parents surely know that it's important then, but of course, then thinking about that, yeah, I kicked my kids out the door every morning and said, "Go to school," and trust they show up. And mine do, but, but you know, that's the point where the, the students themselves start having some control over whether they get to class or not.
Right.
And I see where that doesn't work for every child to be told to go to school now.
Well, we do, we do see, and you can see in our state average and even, and in yours as well, we, we tend to see a high level of excused absences in the, in that kindergarten level as, you know, parents are just learning, you know, how important it is for their student to be in school. It's not just naps and graham crackers, as I heard another superintendent say, say today. It's, it's act, it is true, actual learning. And what we want to do is, is help you build those, those behaviors, those positive attendance behaviors early on within, within your community and with your parents.
And then what's good is, as we go year to year, back, you know, your point about the flus is, is a great point, which is going, what is the impact this year? Because not only was it severe, but it's been a prolonged flu season. So as we go into next year at the same time of looking at code usage for illness and looking at these trends, is this the norm that we're seeing so that we can address it differently? Or was an exception this year because of the extenuating circumstances?
Right. Yeah, though, you know, it's not just the, the severe illness like the flu. I mean, children, the kindergarteners coming into the school setting possibly for the first time, a lot of colds. I mean, it was, it was colds in junior high for us.
Yep.
You know, it wasn't ever anything big, but, you know, they, they went from having a pool of basically thirty students to share germs with to having six hundred. And, you know, some kids really like those germs. Yeah, so anyway, well, these guys have some other questions. I think now I was just noting that, that smiley face attendance pattern.
And again, this is your base year.
As well.
So as Jeff mentioned, we'll be able to do comparisons and, you know, where you are at this point next year, et cetera.
Yeah, and I see though, it's, it's not just us. It's a very common pattern.
Right, right.
It tells us something, I'm just not sure what yet. So, Mr. Ali, did you have questions?
No, is this the, the point that we were supposed to get the update, or is that still coming?
No, this is, this is, this is the mid-year update, yeah.
So, so basically, we're looking at, we've possibly saved about sixty-one thousand dollars, is what you?
I would say that at this point, that was, that's just the normal fluctuation because it took time for this to get into place. So it's very difficult to actually pinpoint, you know, what it, what it was. I think the first letters I said went on in November, kind of the middle of November. And my calculations were pretty much the beginning of December. So it was, it's too hard for that to actually have happened at that time. So it was kind of a normal fluctuation. But just in answering Ms. Douglas's question about our, the number of, of letters that went out is not indicative of higher absent rate than it was last year. It's more, it's indicative of getting these letters out and communicating more. And, and also, if, if I may add, when you were discussing the kindergarteners being absent more, and then they come back and the parents take the schooling a little bit more seriously, and they start attending more, I would still bet that the ones that are ill in the, the lower elementaries are more likely the ones that were also out in the kindergarten. So not all of them are taking it as seriously. It's kind of starts at the beginning there.
All right.
So at this point, we're a little bit short on data.
So, yeah, so just, just out of curiosity, so did we save the sixty-one thousand dollars? Or, or we made?
Made it, made it.
Oh, so we made sixty-one thousand dollars because if I'm correct?
Compared to, compared to last year, compared to the first three months of last year, our attendance improved by point one nine percent.
And the reason that's important is because we get, the school district gets money for the students coming to class, and if they don't come to class, we don't get money.
Correct.
That's, that's, that's the first piece that I'm trying, trying to get to.
We made the money, not saved.
And so, so basically, roughly for the first two months. Now, because the sixty-one thousand dollars coming, is that just an annual? Or is that going to be in another three months, we make another sixty-one thousand dollars? Just out of curiosity.
That, that's just the, if that trend persisted. If it was, you know, that's just to kind of put a dollar amount, what does that mean? What does sixty, point one nine percent mean? If, if for the whole year, the point one nine?
If we maintain a point one nine percentage of improved attendance, annualized over the year could mean up to sixty-one thousand dollars.
Correct.
However, it is not realized yet because we have not gotten that point one nine. So it's, it's, it's a goal, but we're not there yet.
It could be higher, it could be lower.
Exactly. It could be higher, it could be lower. Now, of the sixty-one thousand dollars that we could potentially make up because we have improved attendance, I knew this became an issue, I remember this, this presentation as of August fourteenth, twenty thirteen, that we actually tabled this because we were talking about someone in the audience, one of the teachers in the audience said that we already had a comparable program, but wasn't being implemented because it did not have the same training. I am wondering, is this the same mannequin with different lipstick? The reason being is that we paid for a program back then, and we're paying for a program now, comparable versus what we had before compared to what we have now? Is it an improvement? Are we doing something different with this program versus last program? That's, that's basically the question.
Well, I wasn't here with the last program, but I can tell you that our staff would be doing it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, okay, so if I'm correct now, the staff, the staff had the program, and now with attention to attendance, we're outsourcing this to someone else to do this service for us.
Part of it, yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, the reason, the reason I am saying this is because this is fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars. I want people to understand, I want the standing room only to understand where our monies are going and why we do these things. The reason we want better attendance is because the better attendance we get, the more basically financial support we get.
The reason we want better attendance is because our students will learn better if they actually are in class.
True, but I think one of the main reasons.
And the point one nine percent increase in instruction time.
That's true, that's true. On, on a subjective level, but on a quantitative level, quantitative level, it's important because it gets money. That's, I mean, seriously, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be tracking this.
And I think, Mr. O'Titie, if you remember, when we were making this recommendation, we spoke to and got hard numbers from a variety of districts in our area and said, truly, truly, what were the effects of this, implementing this program in this way? And every single one of them certainly shared that they've improved the culture around attendance in their school and the conversations and the conferencing that happened because they were doing this on a more regular basis. And also, and this is getting to your second point, it did improve the average daily attendance rate, which, as you'll see later in today's presentation, that directly translates to more funding. And so.
That's basically what I'm, what I'm.
Exactly, and it, it is, and it is, we could, and as I said then, we could do the same thing we've done before and see nothing, or we can try something new and see more. And I think we're beginning to see a little bit more now. When these numbers were polled, they're December 2nd, I don't think the big flu absences started to happen. I think that happened certainly returning back from, from the winter break. So we'll have to see, we know, we'll, we will be monitoring it, and we certainly hope we see an increase in our average attendance because I will translate to funding. But I do know that what we are seeing, even this messaging of showing up, is getting across. I had somebody communicate with me and parrot back those words to me in, in a, in a concern. And so the importance of showing up, you've said it, and, you know, we want, we want to do that. So it is getting across, and I think people are starting to verbalize it, which is a great thing to be happening. I mean, and that's, that's what, we're here to educate our kids. We're here to educate them not only in academics, but also in ways of being and in ways of showing up. And I think that, that over time, that this will become part of who we are in Jefferson Elementary. We'll talk about that all the time.
I one hundred percent agree that trying new things to see if we can improve is, is key, to make, to make changes, see if we could make incremental improvements. And basically, that's what I'm wondering, is there a, basically, an A/B test? There's how do we do it last time versus how we do it now? Is there improvement, and, and we're here to see it? And we're also, and we also focus on this because of, like you said, better culture in schools, and also there's a, there's a monetary incentive from our state. Now, one of the questions that I do have, because when this contract came in on September eleventh, twenty thirteen, what did the contract get signed for? Now, there was a base program of fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the school year implementation of twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, and then a K through three initiative for an additional twenty-two, twenty-five thousand two hundred fifty, a curb chronic absenteeism, which I'm wondering what you mean by that, for additional twenty-four thousand nine hundred fifty, and testing and incentive initiative at eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars, which totals one hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred. Now, how much of that have we paid out? And are we getting banged for a buck? And let's go back to what I was saying, at that point one nine percent increase, we would get sixty-one thousand dollars, but we spent one hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars to get that. Is, is the return on investment?
So if you look carefully at the item, you'll see that the contract was approved for the fifty-two thousand dollar amount. Those other amounts were there because when we began speaking to the, to the organization, we asked for what other services are offered, and we asked to, in a sense, get a pre-quote on those in case we decide that we would like to add those at a future date. And I believe, Mr. Owen, you can, if you can, or Ms. Kessler, you did provide those for us and that, that there was an agreement for, that they would stay there or that they would go up only by a certain amount regardless of whatever the base rate you would be charging for those services at that time.
You framed it perfectly, which was, it was, for example, you brought up this issue that we have right here in front of us, this K-three issue. And, and those services, try to be brief about this, but though, all of those additional services came out of when we took our million students and we did a longitudinal study of them over three years. And all of those services that you just listed along with a few others are directly put together to address those issues. So what we wanted to do is start with this base service, get this process, get this consistency, which we're showing now, which is saying already, we're getting way more communication out than ever before, as dictated, as dictated in the slides before. Now, at the end of the year, when we kind of get a full year's worth of numbers, it's then when we'll sit down with leadership and then part of the, the presentation of the board to say, is the data that we're seeing and where we're at with the culture change, is it an issue that we want to address through some additional interventions, some additional focus, some additional communication pieces? To parents specifically of K-three for that example, that we want to put a pinpoint focus on those students? Because again, you may be looking at it from the monetary perspective. Our whole focus, and why we don't even really gauge the ADA, is about increased instructional time, learning time. So for example, let's look at our secondary. Let's say you have a student that is showing up the first couple of periods in the day and then leaving after lunch. Well, from an ADA perspective, they're on the books, you got money for them. What we're trying to address is specifically getting those students to attend the, the periods that they're missing. So the instruction. So there's two kind of set of circumstances. That transition year, so for example, if you look at here, is it K-five or K-six?
Both.
Both, okay. So what we tend to see, and it's a little nominal here, but we'll see at the final year in the numbers, what we were seeing were huge jumps from when students, we would see this. You'd kind of have the K-through-three spike, they'd be a little higher, and then they'd settle in into the later grades of elementary. Then we would see large spikes when they made the transition from middle to high, or elementary to high and middle, or, sorry, elementary to middle, middle to high. And so we put together some specific targets to focus on teachers and students of the years when they're transitioning out. So if it's a K-five, we want to put some onus and coaching and PD together for those fifth grade teachers on how to take the good attendance practices they have in fifth grade and carry those over into sixth, and work with the sixth grade teachers to not just address it at beginning of the school year orientation, but continue to reinforce that, or maybe look at how we set up the intervention strategies for sixth graders so they hopefully maintain that. So the additional services in that contract are clearly, are stated that they are exercisable options. We could continue with the base program at fifty-four for the remainder of the contract, or if we see that that's the, the area that we can focus on to get us the next gains in either instructional time or monetary gain, that we have the option to exercise that and that you're locked into it over the next couple of years.
The district has the option to exercise it.
And, and the, then the reason I bring the, bring up cost and taxpayer money, and I've, I've always talked about this, is that since we, now we do have two things, we could do an A/B test on, did our system work before better, or did our system work now after? And to be cognizant for our future members who are going to be here more years, that we understand where our money is going. That's basically it.
So I, I just had a question about the point one nine. So is that our target? Is that what we're looking at for the whole school year to have? Yeah.
No, that's just, all that is, is answering to Mrs. Douglas's question about whether we, our attendance was really worse, and is that why we had so many more communications? And no, it's not.
All right, well, I'm just asking because there was a, I know you can't guarantee, you know, an increase, but there had to be some figure that was brought up that we were targeting to, you know, not just break even or lose money, right? Does anyone remember what that was?
Yes, I do, and I'll look it up on the contract, but I do remember that.
I don't, I don't believe it's in the, it's not in the contract.
Oh.
No, it's not, not in the contract.
But it was talked about in the.
It was, it was discussed.
But I imagine that is more than the point one nine because we wouldn't be.
So the districts that we spoke to had, had different ranges of improvements in their first year from point five, I think, to, you know, I think there might have been one that might have been two percent.
All right.
So they had a range of improvements depending on their population and the, the steps that they took and the follow-through.
Right.
And the response. And so, you know, we're, and, and right now, we're, like this, like was mentioned, we're now beyond the implementation phase, so the first couple of months have been getting used to the system, and now it's in the, in the, using the system to support our students.
Right.
So.
So we need to give it more time to see what the gains are, and then we'll be, we'll be able to make a better decision if it was financially beneficial. But you already see a change in the culture, you're getting more work done in an easier way. So that's already, you know, something positive that we can say. So it seems like we need more time.
Yeah, our goal would be to be in that top performer line. And, and we, certainly, we're, we're much better than the average district, but my goal would be that we would be much closer to the top performer. And, and if we are, that we would, we would begin to see some benefits in, in a variety of ways.
All right. And then I have one more technical question for Mr. Owen. So say a school district is utilizing this service and they keep getting gains. At a certain point, they're not going to keep getting gains. So is that when you sell the extra services, or do you?
That's part of what we, part of what we put together is we, you know, we've had districts now on this eight, nine, ten years. And what we kind of noticed, again, looking at the longitudinal pieces, is that usually around years two and three, you do begin to see a plateau on the base service. At some point, this becomes kind of automated. It's not as energized. And in some cases, we saw even, you know, a step back a little bit. And not only do we want to address certain pieces, but as you know, you want to keep things fresh. You want to keep things energized. So by putting in these other initiatives, that's how we can continue to push for improvement while adding some new features. And, and also, you know, even in the base, you know, when we started this ten years ago, we only did the first truancy letter. And then we did letters two and three, and then we found that unexcused were going down and excused absences were going up. So it was prompting excuse notes to come in. So we started addressing excused absences, conference notifications. So it continues to grow. But you're right, at some point, you get to a point where you're going to start potentially plateauing, and that's when you sit down with leadership and the principals and go, what is it that we're seeing? That's also that suppression rate, is we also want to make sure, you know, when we get into the end of the year, we've got this benchmark of when principals or the site staff go in there. We want them to encourage them to go and look at it, and there are circumstances when a letter shouldn't go out. But in those cases, for example, we're more concerned about the sites that do zero suppressions than the ones that do higher because it's just an automated process then. They're not going in and looking at it. So there's a lot of those things that we'll be gauging, and Kara and her team will be working with the principals on and communicating with leadership on as well.
So, but even after years, and, you know, if, if a district has that plateau, they're still going to have a certain amount in that manageable group, correct?
Well, that's, and that's that thing you want to look at, is going, are we, you know, again, outside of ADA, we, when we did that little bucket, are, is our severely chronic number shrinking? Is our chronic shrinking? Are we moving them back towards that satisfactory, satisfactory and excellent? Because one example of the ADA, and you pointed out, but you need some more time and comparables. So for example, Sanger Unified's been on the program for about seven years. There are K-twelve, twelve thousand kids. Over the first three to four years, they actually had incrementally gained up over two percent in ADA. And then, if you remember H-one, N-one?
Yeah.
If you were just solely looking at ADA numbers, that year, if you just looked at it from one number, you would have said, "We stepped back," because that impacted greatly their overall ADA numbers. So not only do we want to look at that, but what we end up able to do is by looking at the attendance codes comparison, looking at this kind of information year to year, what we can then inform is what is influencing the ADA? What is that A/B kind of test? So was it that the number is point one nine? But heck, it could have been point two-five or point five if we didn't have the flu season. Who knows? But that's what we're trying to find is through the attendance patterns. Because as you said, as Superintendent Vidal said, if we can get to the gray line, common sense indicates that you're going to have more learning time, so achievement scores should go up, and you're going to have more kids at school every day, ADA. I mean, there's a, there's a cause and effect.
Can I just add to that? One thing that the program does that we did not have before was identify chronic absences. We had no way of collecting that data. And that's also something that we're sending out letters for to families that we did not do before. So this is something that is going to be required of the new local control accountability plan. We have to have data on chronic absence, and we weren't able to collect that before. So now we are able to with A2A. So it is something new that we weren't able to do, and we need this data. It's going to be required.
So the data, and I can imagine that the communications weren't so positive before, right? I mean, I, I don't want to assume, but, yeah.
If I could add something to this, you know, having been a principal of both the elementary school and the middle school, to have those parents coming in for conferences is going to be huge. And so that was always really hard to set up because of everything else you were doing. And that's the part I like to see more parents actually coming in and, and having that face-to-face kind of conversation.
And that's where we get at the point where we are again working with, with Sandy and the principals to really start messaging now, okay, you're, you've got the system down as far as getting the letters to go out and reviewing the students. Now we do want to focus on making sure that those conferences get scheduled.
And Ms. Hoffman, I appreciate you saying that because frankly, where this whole idea of culture change came from was our principals, when we were doing surveys and talking to them about the impact of it, were coming to us and saying, "What I love about is I'm having more conversations than I ever had before. This is really what I should be doing every day." And I love, and it's self-reinforcing because they were seeing students showing up every day. They were seeing the change in behavior, they were, the conversations were changing. And why we wanted to turn it into a positive in the showing up conversation is, not that you got this punitive letter, you know, with lots of state ed code, and it's that, look, every study indicates, and it's a life lesson. You got to be here every day. You know, attendance is the number one indicator of a student's success or failure. That's why we want you here. That's why we're reaching out to you. That's why I want to sit down and figure out what's going on at the, at the home. We can help.
I think we're over time on this.
I think we are also. But if there are no other questions, then I, I know that this is around our time that we have our opportunity for the escape clause, which I think was what you were kind of asking about. If we're interested, I feel like we're just seeing it get started. And in fact, although it's six months, you know, you got that check, we don't actually have enough data to be able to say, does this work or does it not? My feeling is that just the fact that we're sending out that many more communications has got to ultimately have some effect. And I'd like to see us continue it through the year to find out what effect. And if people are in agreement, then there's no action required on this unless somebody wishes to make some kind of motion.
Well, maybe number six on the contract client satisfaction. As SIA is committed to providing exceptional service, if district is not satisfied with the software and services provided, district is allowed to, at its option, terminate the contract at six months. Notification of intent to terminate under this section five must be made in writing to the district, to SIA, no later than thirty days. I think maybe coming back again before that termination date to see how things are. So now we could do another midpoint comparison.
So that, that is now, Mr. O'Titie.
That's what I was asking. That's what I asked earlier.
If we sign the contract on September eleventh, the date would be February eleventh, and this is our last meeting before that date.
Six months? No, that's only three months, September, October, November, December.
September, October, November, December, January, eleventh, February eleventh.
February eleventh would be the thirty days before.
Right.
Oh, well.
We haven't lost any money.
I, I would say that, yeah, it appears that we stand a very good chance of breaking even on what we've spent and that it's an experiment worth following through on.
Certainly, I think the learning that. Certainly, I think the learning that's taken place from the staff is, is, is beneficial. The importance of, of the notifications isn't.
Right.
The, you know, feelings of principals and site staff of guilt that I haven't sent out those letters and I need to send out those letters and I need to go through the attendance system and pull those reports. But that is no longer on their plate. That's, that's been taken care of outside. All they have to do now is say, okay, here are the kids that we want to send the letters to. And here's the ones that I know they don't need that letter because I know the circumstances. So, so I think it's much more, it's monitoring attendance and notifications. I'm not going to say it's completely pleasant anymore, but it's much more pleasant than it was before. Because you, I mean, I know that when I was a site principal, that was one of the things that I hardly ever got to. There were so many other things that take up time. There's so many urgent things that happen that I never got a chance to be proactive about things. So this is an opportunity.
Is so far, since we've been using the program, if I'm hearing this correctly, we have seen some improvement?
We don't know. We don't know if we've seen improvement. We've seen, certainly our behaviors have improved. Think I can say that. Our actions and our behaviors have improved. And we're hoping that that, you know, hope is not a strategy, but we are, you know, but it is.
On the, on the other side of things, I'm thinking, how about, and, and kids are going to get sick. That's, that's a given. People are going to get sick. What are we doing on the other end to make it so that the kids want to come to school? What kind of rewards or positive reinforcers are we having for the students to want to come?
Yes, and I think that that's the conversation we have with our principals. Because definitely we have those perfect attendance awards and the, you know, good attendance awards.
I never get that at George Washington.
Once you miss two days of school or three days of school, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not up for that prize anymore. So there's no motivation. So we do need, we are considering some different options for acknowledging and awarding, perhaps even students who move from the manageable into the satisfactory, you know.
Or a particular focusing on that fifth grade class.
Yeah, or something, you know, we do need to acknowledge the, the kids in the middle who show improvement in attendance instead of just maintaining the perfect attendance or very low absence. Because like you said, somebody gets a cold that knocks them down for four days. And then they're out of the running even though they've been there every single day. So.
And, and if I may add, as Ms. McCullic had said, if there is a piece here that we are going to be required to speak to and have information on, and we don't have the ability to get that information, if we don't do it this way, we will have to find another way. Some other software program or something that will give us that information if indeed it is required.
All right.
Okay, great. Well, if there is no further.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to continue.
I think to continue, we don't actually have to do anything.
Unless you want to positively affirm that.
Right, I suppose. But we can, we can positively affirm.
Make a motion to end deliberation and move on to the next.
I will second that.
And I want to thank you two very much for a very extensive report.
And thank you for your interest. We look forward to coming back to the end of the year and showing results. Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
All right.
Okay, item five.
Yes, and so at the, I believe it was the past meeting, there was a request that the board have an opportunity to discuss levels of acknowledgement for different contributions made that might be beyond the current practice. And so just to explain a bit, our current practice is that the receiving entity, whether it be the classroom, the school, the department, or the district, or anything in between, the receiving entity does generate the letter of acknowledgement. If not, thank, thanks. And this is all just mostly to our private contributors. Our, our grant system is a little bit different because we go through signing a whole set of other papers that say, yes, we're getting the money and yes, we're agreeing to, to follow through on the activities. But the, the gifts to our schools and classrooms are followed through with letters of thanks. And so there was a desire to discuss if, if more should be done. And if, and if so, at what level those might kick in, so.
I think I brought this up and I actually even volunteered to, to help sign, write, put it together. I think the reason being is that just to, just to echo on what you're talking about, positive reinforcement, you know, perfect attendance and things of that sort, writing a letter from the board saying thank you for, albeit $10, a book bag, you know, $1,000 or anything, it's, every penny helps in this district. And I think for us to take the time to even just sign it, even if it's, even if it's a second letter of thank you, not just the receiving department, but from the board itself, I think it's just positive.
I definitely think that that's positive. I also think that it might be wise to put a level on there just because it might end up being a lot of work and then just extra paper, right? So I don't know what that amount would be, but you said $8, right? But I'm just saying, I don't, 50, I, I don't know where, where we would start with that. But I think that is, it is, it is a good idea at times to send another letter. But who's going to do it and?
Right. Those things cost money.
I'll do it. All right.
Yes, so, I mean, I think it's appropriate if, if the board decides to determine a level, those letters could be generated by our offices. These, we can get them in spreadsheet format and easily generate those letters. But whether you want it to be signed by me or you want it signed by the president of the board or both, you know, that's, that's something. I would suggest that, that we do it for our major gifts, certainly, not even major, just our sub-major gifts, like anything over $250 or $500. Just because the, for the pencil box that's donated, the thanks from the teacher means a whole lot more than a letter from our board and superintendent for somebody donating a pencil box. Because they did it, they did it to, to, for the pleasure of the class. And the thanks from the teacher, I think, is much more meaningful. When somebody makes major donations, they don't necessarily, they, most of them do, but they don't necessarily have that positive connection to the classroom or to the school they're doing because they want to do something good. And so getting, getting acknowledgement from certainly the principal and maybe even at a higher level, the district or superintendent could be appropriate. If that's, if that's the practice that the board would like to begin, we would be okay with that. But I would, I would definitely say a level because it, it seems, it, it might cost more to generate the letter and print it and mail it than the, you know, the item that was donated. So which we don't want to, we don't want to deny individuals the opportunity to donate small things.
There's an element of absurdity in getting that kind of letter in response to a very small donation that you've made. I mean, I've, I've experienced that. I might suggest that we think about a level of, you know, maybe even as low as $100. Because when, when a parent or, I mean, you know, when a corporation gives $100, it's chump change. But when a parent or a community member gives $100, that's usually a significant donation that's, that's worth acknowledging.
A family outing that didn't happen.
Right, yeah. You know, a tank of gas or two, depending on what kind of car you drive.
Yeah, I've seen $100 in a lot of nonprofit organizations. You donate 100 and you become part of like a club or a member or something like that.
That becomes a level of acknowledgement, a circle acknowledgement.
Yeah, that's often.
That's a good one.
So.
But I just want to also just mention that we're, you know, we're saying that we want to put a level, but we do acknowledge them verbally, whether it's one cent or, you know, $1,000. We still have taken that off the consent agenda and we do that every time. So.
Well, would you like?
I like the idea of having that $100 and then.
It seems like a nice level.
Yeah. But then we have to, I guess, figure out at $100, who's, is, who's going to sign the letter?
Well, I would say certainly the board, probably the board president, though it's a very nice offer, but, you know, we're going to make it sound nice. Give somebody with a title, right? Whether or not we ask the superintendent, I mean, in a sense, this is really something that's, it's the board thanking them, whether we make Mr. Vidalis sign more things.
I think we should, I think we should include him.
He signs everything.
I have a folder every morning where I, where I sign, so that would be fine. It's not, it's not, it's not, not a problem to sign.
They're going to generate the letter. He might as well sign it.
That's true. Get some credit, okay?
And, and as, as, as veteran board members, we see the amount of minutes that we have to sign over contract or voting or resolutions. I mean, it's just part of the stack of pages that we have to sign.
So timeliness wise, I think I would, I think the fewer people who sign, the, the better.
Definitely.
So, and we can see if we can have those letters generated prior to, to the board meeting. But it may take, sometimes items and things don't get on the board agenda till the last minute. And so we, but we can work on the timeliness aspect of it, try to get it out at least by Thursday after the board meeting.
All right, so I'm ready then.
Okay, you ready?
All right. I move that we set a limit of $100 for generating a thank you letter to be signed by the superintendent and board president. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Manners would be proud of us. She would probably say that we should be sending them to the ones who donated $5 too.
And they do get them.
Yes, they do. Yeah. Okay, well, speaking of donations, that brings us to section two, curriculum and instruction, item one, acceptance of donations.
My, my favorite part again. Once again, thank you. Every penny counts. The donations to MP Brown Disney toys from the Prozins, Pro, Polkresin Nikki family, I apologize. A family that were used for their free raffle. Six boxes of used binders, an example that we're talking about, and stock paper from Mr. Mark Argarin. $500 from Frosty Friday Photo Fundraiser and Mr. John Domine to be used at the school. $50 from the Amgen Foundation Matching Gifts and Staff Volunteer Program to be used at school. I motioned to have these donations accepted as stated.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Section three, business and financial. And I see that Ms. Kessler is ready and what do we have? I think we've got, we've got unabund性的.
Passing on comments earlier in the meeting. That's what I passed last week.
Right. Okay, and this is our governor's budget update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so I've gone to a couple meetings. As you know, the governor has come out with his January proposal for the 1415 state budget. And the School Services of California shared information with us and so did Capitol Advisor. So I've been to a couple conferences as well, read a lot of articles. And so we're moving forward on 201415. So the state of the US economy is improving at a steady pace. It's a little bit slow, but it is quite steady. Stock market is actually hitting record highs. Housing market is improving in most areas in the United States. Capital investments by businesses are up. Unemployment rate is down. November 2013, it was 6.7% nationwide. And consumer spending is up. And thankfully, the US legislatures avoided another federal shutdown for a while. I think it was too embarrassing last time and that helped out this time that we didn't have to deal with that again.
That's true.
The state economy is also improving, although at a slower rate than the federal economy. We, the recession hit us harder than most states and usually does. And our, our pullback is a little bit slower. Housing market is growing nicely, particularly on the coast, the coastal areas. Inland and the Central Valley, it is lagging behind, but that's to be expected. Unemployment rate does continue to drop. November 2013, we were at 8.5% unemployment. And that is, in, in February to October 2010, we were at 12.4%. So we've dropped about a third in the unemployment rate since Octo, since, yeah, October 2010. But the pre-recession, so January 2007, we were at 4.9%. So we are currently still 74% higher than pre-recession unemployment. But we're continuing to go down. December rates are not out yet for California. California is still the fifth, has still the fifth highest unemployment rate in the nation. Nevada and Rhode Island have 9%, Michigan 8.8%, and Illinois 8.7%. So Carrie's probably happy to have a job in Illinois. And personal income taxes in California are, they're forecasted to have accelerated growth in the next few years. And just as a reminder, that personal income tax has not, it's fallen short consistently. So it might be a little bit optimistic. We do believe it will accelerate, it will continue to get better, but I'm not sure at what accelerated rate. So state revenues, pre-recession, we had about, in the general fund of the state, about $100 billion to, of revenues that would be budgeted out. And so for 1415, we have the Department of Finance is saying we have about $106 billion. But remember that $7 billion of those funds are in temporary taxes. So it is something to, to remember. Those temporary taxes will expire. They will sunset. The sales and use tax, we have another three years before it will sunset, end of 2016. And the increase in personal income tax on the highest paid earners will sunset in five years, the end of 2018. Just because these two are, you know, big taxes, they are, with the personal income tax, the state sales and use tax, as well as the corporate tax, those make up approximately 95% of the general fund revenues that we get on a yearly basis. And of course, this is just, these are increased portions. It's not like sales tax is going to go away. It's just that the increased amount will go away. And the increased amount of income tax will go away. So the governor's overall budget, obviously it incorporates more than just education. Yeah, but the biggest portion goes to education. We look at K-12 education, it's 42, so this is at $107 billion that we've got to budget out for this next year. K-12 education gets 42.4% of that budget. Higher education, 11.6%. So 54% of the budget is for education. And then, as you can see, 20% is for health. And then we have all these others. And unfortunately, 9% going to corrections. It would be nice to be able to get that down. And maybe we'll get that down while our attendance goes up. And everybody's attendance goes up and people are more successful and we have less need for corrections department. Also, there is a reserve of $2.5 billion that is expected in his budget. And really, that comes a lot from the cuts from past years, just as we had cuts in the past years. And we may not restore everything that we cut. The state is in the same position. They may not restore everything they cut. But also we have the economic growth and we have the temporary taxes. So consequently, there is a reserve.